Good morning, welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for November 26, 2024. We call this meeting to order and be headed towards closed session. Matt and Clint, would you please read the session?
Closed session, item one pursuant to government code 54956.8 Conference Real Property Negotiator, Marcos Munoz, re-potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 042015032, negotiating party Jim Harryford. Item two pursuant to government code 54956.9D1 Conference Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, County of Calaveras versus Tuscornia Ranches Limited Partnership at All, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 20CV45113. Item three pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 Conference Legal Counsel Re-Anticipated Litigation, one case significant exposure to litigation.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on these items? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. We will recess to closed session and return at nine o'clock for our regular board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right. Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November 26, 2024. If you are able, will you please rise for a pledge of allegiance? To rise up now, you lead us this morning.
Mr. Chair, do you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff announcements.
This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Any staff like to make an announcement this morning? Anybody online?
No online requests.
All right. We will move on. We'll close staff announcements. We'll move on to reporting out in closed session.
Report out of closed session for today, November 26th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference real property negotiator Marcos Munoz, re potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 0421015032. Negotiating party Jim Harryford. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, County of Calaveras versus Tuscornia Ranches Limited Partnership at All, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 20CB45113. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken.
All right. Recognizations and acknowledgements.
Um, sorry Sheri, I lied to you. But I'm not gonna say anything bad, yet. So, okay, cool. Sorry, Sidney.
Item four, proclamation, clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation honoring Sheri Rouge and congratulating her on her retirement.
Thank you. I will pass the gavel to Supervisor Stopper.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra Mendi. Twenty years of service. Like, it's, like, for a school board, that's gotta be like dog years, like 140? That's impressive, very impressive, Ms. Rouge. Whereas Sheri Rouge began her service on the Calaveras Unified School District Board in 2004, when she was elected as the trustee, area one representative, and served as board president multiple times throughout her years of service. Whereas Sheri has committed herself to ensuring the safety of the children in her community. She's, she helped to write the largest safe routes to school grant in our region for the Jenny Lynn and Valley Springs Elementary School sidewalks. She worked closely with multiple supervisors and public work directors to complete the Valley Springs Safe Route to School project and was instrumental in seeing the project completed. And whereas, among her many accomplishments while serving on the board in 2004, Sheri helped to start trunk or treat at Jenny Lynn Elementary School. It's awesome. I, I'm still brushing my teeth.
Please try again.
Thank you, Sheri. In, in 2006, she and a friend, friend took over the Fine Arts Day event to remind students of the importance of creativity in education. Sheri also helped the school district pass a bond for the Calaveras High School Performing Arts Center. And whereas, after the graduations of her son and daughter from Calaveras High School, Sheri has continued to dedicate herself to the community as a school board member, a Rotary member, president of the Chamber of Commerce, chair of the Calaveras Mariposa Community Action Agency, and participates in many other organizations. She is the current registrar and director of the Rotary Youth Leadership Awards Camp that annually takes 200 of our top male and female junior leaders from 55 high schools for a day, four-day conference at two separate camps in Oakhurst, California. Whereas Sheri has previously served as North Stockton president and has served as president of West Calaveras Rotary, past president and charter member of San Andreas Rotary, which does all the volunteer work and fundraising for the park in San Andreas Hospice and Raging Cajun Festival. Awesome. And, oh yeah. Almost dropped the gun. Can't proclaim anything yet. Yeah, Sheri, I mean, this, this is understatement of your accomplishments and your dedication to your community. I, it says here that, you know, you, you can't continue your service for the kids beyond your kids graduating from high school. You know, I've, I've talked to a couple of more recent board members, you know, that were going for the board, board over there, and my first suggestion was, don't do it. Parents can be scary. You know, I, I mean, we, we, we get a lot over here of grief to certain levels, but, you know, when it comes to children, people take a net, an extra step when they're, in their passion, as they move forward. Would you like to come up and say something, Sheri? I definitely would like to say more to you.
I think John needs to come up and say other words.
Yes. And I will, I will tell you, Sheri, a lot of these, this, you know, your success shows just from building relationships. And, you know, a lot of times, you know, we have big differences in, in opinions in many ends. I mean, you're on your way to becoming a saint. I was, you know, I, First Miracle's bringing me around the corner a little bit, you know, over the years. So I was very passionate coming up. And, you know, you're building relationships. I mean, I think this guy here called me because your husband and him were talking, and he said, I need to do this. So there's another relationship you built from?
Many years.
From many years.
Many years. All of you. Yeah. No, I appreciate you guys. I mean it. There are times that I couldn't do my job without you guys and your support. Not only personally as friends, but also as supervisors, before you were supervisors, I've had connections with all of you. And so I do appreciate you all. I'm ready to turn in my gavel. I have one more meeting tonight. But I, yeah, I've served my community, and I will continue. I'm not going anywhere. I'm still doing the chambers, still helping businesses. But I'm gonna take off my school board hat for now, so. But thank you. Thank you, all of you, for your support.
Bless you. Thank you. Any public comment?
Thank you, Sheri.
Mr. Rouge, would you like to say anything?
Good job, John, on keeping this a secret.
As she says, oh my God. Yeah. John Rouge, I, you know, I can't speak enough from
cover things like the fire that she was participating, you know, to run into community members to where they come up to you and said, oh, that was so great. You got us closed, you know, that kind of stuff. So, yeah, it's very special. And tonight is the last night. So we're excited about it. Thank you very much.
Oh, it's not gonna be the last.
Is, is it? Further public comment?
Good morning. Matt Brock from San Andreas. I serve, I'm lucky enough to serve Sherri on the school board. Thank you for your leadership. Uh, thank you for showing us all how to step up and take care of our community. Really appreciate it.
Anyone else? One, one question. Did anybody, is anybody vying for your position?
So we appointed Supervisor Toffenelli. So we appointed Mike Rude.
Okay. I, I should've showed up so that I could've told him to reappoint you. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli, second by Supervisor Garamendi.
I'll third it.
Mr. Hubbard. And, you know, as a fifth, I'm, did we already vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Five-oh vote of the board. I'll put on my glasses. I get this right, Sherri. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Calaveras County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to Sherri Rouge for her dedicated service, leadership, and commitment to the community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the Calaveras County, this 26th day of November 2024, does hereby honor and recognize Sherri for her two decades of dedicated service, leadership, and commitment to the Calaveras Unified School Board District and the community of Calaveras County. Passed and adopted this day.
Y'all come up and get a picture of me now.
Thanks for sharing her with us all this time. We appreciate it.
Pleasure.
Thanks, Mark.
I lied about the rest.
Thank you very much.
Hilarious. You're gonna support that right now?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Two dollars up.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Let's go on to public comment. Thank you, Sherri.
Any of item, any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Okay. I think everybody here should know the drill. Everybody's gonna get three minutes. If you are commenting on an item that comes up later on in the agenda, I will ask you to stop and reserve your comments for when we get to that item. With no further ado, who would like to kick us off? Mr. Butner.
My name's Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2024election.com. I've stood before this Board of Supervisors numerous times. Of the many credible evidence-backed allegations, I've leveled against the endemic and economically corrosive corruption embedded in the Calaveras government and the numerous ethically compromised and corrupt individuals responsible. Not once has any allegation of mine been challenged or refuted, and not once has there been any acknowledgement by the Board of Supervisors, CEO, county council, DA, or grand jury of my blistering allegations. Why is that? Because my allegations are factual and damning. As 2024 concludes, let's revisit a few allegations, beginning with the two district supervisors who are up for reelection in 2026. Ben, it's over for you. This is your final term. Expect no leniency from the state's investigation of your numerous violations of the Political Reform Act. It's very reasonable to now anticipate you'll be fined tens of thousands of dollars for your many and repeated failures to comply with filing requirements for your Fair Political Practice Commission forms, despite having received explicit written warning from the state for your previous filing deception. Martin, it's been over for your political career since you took the oath of office in January 2023. This is your first and final term as D3 supervisor. You collect, but you do not earn, two full-time taxpayer-funded salaries for producing mediocre part-time results. You are the subject of an FPPC Political Reform Act investigation and the subject of multiple legal actions initiated by me, having filed harassment claims against you with the sheriff's office, with my claims backed by irrefutable evidence. Of your many unethical acts, I allege that you, as executive director, fraudulently misrepresented the CVB's nonprofit corporation type for three years while repeatedly obtaining taxpayer TOT funding, and you've yet to be held accountable for repeatedly deceiving the public and the governments of Calaveras County and Angels Camp. Gary, you're currently under FPPC Political Reform Act scrutiny for 15 alleged violations under circumstances echoing Ben's and Amanda's for your repeated disregard and failure to accurately and timely file your FPPC forms. Amanda, you're currently under FPPC Political Reform Act investigation for your many repeated failures to comply with accurate and timely filing requirements of your FPPC forms. When you take the oath of office in January for a second term, you'll do so under a dark cloud for credible allegations of you having absconded with over $8,400 in union campaign contributions to your 2020 campaign. None of you Forscoff laws should have voting privilege on any authority over a nearly $400 million annual budget, but yet there you sit. My name's Christopher Butner. The website has been rechristened calaveras2026election.com. Thank you.
Other public comment? All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Any board members like to pull an item from the consent agenda? I would like to pull item 15, just for a brief conversation. Any public in the room that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
We have no online requests.
No online. All right. Is there a motion to accept the remainder of the consent agenda? I'll make a motion. Moved by Supervisor Hubbard, second by Supervisor Volendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's five-zero. Item 15.
Item 15, agreement administrative office, one, award RFP 24-1040-01-925 for construction management of the new behavioral health building to Veneer Construction Management, Inc. Two, authorized for chair to execute agreement 10402414 with Veneer Construction Management, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $1,127,020 for the term of November 12, 2024 through May 31, 2027. And three, authorize a county executive officer or dozen need to assign amendments to the agreement, if any, so long as they do not affect the amount, the not-to-exceed amount.
Thank you. I pulled this item, so I'll ask the question. And I already worked this through with Marcos yesterday, but I thought it'd be good for the board to understand. Marcos, my question is, this is a major project for the county. A lot of money going in and out the door. How will we cash flow this? I know we've got a grant, but I was hoping you could explain that so the boards are aware.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. A great question. Supervisor Toffenelli touched on this many months ago. Also, he was asking a similar question. Typically, grants are either advanced or they are reimbursed. Advanced mean we receive the money in full and as we work towards the grant, we spend it down. Reimbursement is when we have the expenses and then we reach out to the state to be reimbursed, and that process can take months, which create cash flow issues. This grant is none of those. This grant was awarded, it's $22.6 million. The state took the full amount and they set it aside in a state bank account. So the money is sitting there already. When we receive invoices, and we have already claimed three times, but when we receive invoices, we submit those invoices to the state, let them know we're looking to pay these invoices. They review the invoices and then they wire transfer the money from that bank account into the county coffers. So, for example, we submitted invoices on November 14th, so that was Thursday, November 14th. We were notified on Friday, November 22nd, that the money was ready for a wire transfer. So then we processed that wire transfer. So that was eight calendar days. So in terms of cash flow, it should not affect us from a cash flow, as we send the invoices to the state. Once they approve, then we submit the invoices for payment. So the county pays once the state gives us approval and wire transfers the money to our coffers. So that's how this grant works. Again, the, the one issue where we may see a cash flow, just to be completely transparent, is we can only have one submittal open at a time. Therefore, if we are waiting for the money for some invoices, we cannot submit another request for money, which may add another week or two onto that timeline, but it will all be within that initial 30 days where we receive invoices.
That's great news. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Toffenelli?
I do. Since that's transpiring that way, and it's going through the state and they're approving them, at the end of the project, is there any audit that could, on those invoices and them paying them? Are we up for an audit that we could, they could say, well, wait a minute?
Great. So they are auditing them before they release the funds. But I will have to double-check and get you a correct answer if they're gonna be auditing after, well, afterwards, that's what.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Is there a motion from the board?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's five-zero. All right. Let's go on to item 17.
Item 17, action item, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, one, select one member of the Board of Supervisors to act as the 2025 Rural County Representatives of California, Golden State Connect Authority, Golden State Finance Authority, and RCRC Environmental Joint Powers Authority, and one member to act as the alternate. And two, appoint a 2025 second alternate for the ESJPA.
Okay. I've served on this for the last eight years. They've always been combined because they're usually at the same meeting. It doesn't have to happen that way. We could have four representatives to four committees if we want, or you could continue the way we've been doing it in the past. So with that, I will see who's interested.
I would make a motion for someone, but.
Let's let them declare their interest first.
Yes, I am interested.
Okay. And are you interested in all of these committees?
Yes. And that's in expression from another board member that would like.
Would anybody else like a piece of this pie?
Nope.
I got C-SAC. It's a big enough pie for me.
Okay. So that's our primary. Who, any second? Who would like to be the alternate?
We, I'm not, I'm not interested, but I mean, there, there's also prospective other people.
I've been the alternate for all the time, so I'm willing to let Mark, if he wants to.
I'd, I'd like to do it, yeah.
Okay. So we have Amanda leading these up, and Mark the alternate. We need one more alternate designated for ESJPA.
As far as, and that's typically someone within the IWM, whether it be the director or somebody else within staff, that's typically.
And Cassie's been, between Jennifer and I, we've been going back and forth on who can attend those meetings. So.
ESJPA?
Yeah. And she, she, unless she, something's changed, I don't see her, I think we keep it static.
So we can nominate her in absentia?
Yeah. So Ms. Cassie and Ms. Alice as alternate two, or are we just sticking with Jennifer Cassie?
How many do we need?
We only need one, but I didn't know if we needed to have.
It can be made, change, that can be changed later if needed, correct?
Let's go with Jen. She's, she's head of IWM.
I'll count on that being great.
Perfect.
Okay. So the, the motion, as I understand it, would be for Amanda to be primary. Mark's the alternate.
And Cassie the third.
And Cassie is the third for ESJPA.
You said it for me, Jack. Thank you.
Just making sure.
I'm barring any public comment.
Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Mr.?
I'll volunteer Jennifer Cassie. You know, right? And Ms. Volendorf expressed her willingness. You know, I think I twisted her arm enough the other day, possibly, hopefully. And, Mr. Hubbard, yes.
Okay. So that's the motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's five-zero. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Y'all enjoy it.
Thank you.
It's a good crew.
I have some requests.
Item 18.
Item 18, resolution, planning, one, find project exempt from CEQA, two, conduct a public hearing, and three, adopt a resolution establishing Williamson Act contract number 393 for a total of 305.41 acres, or Mark Boulder as trustee of the Boulder Living Trust.
Gina, welcome.
Good morning.
How's everyone?
I can't see.
This is, yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm opening a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garamendi.
Thank you, Ms. Stopper, for her reminder.
Okay, starting things off. The planning department received a California land conservation application from Mark Boulder on August 2nd, 2024, proposing to enter 305.41 acres of land into an agriculture preserve and to establish Williamson Act contract 3, 393. The subject parcel is comprised of two assessor parcels, APNs 521790 and 502327, both located off of Hunt Road approximately 3.7 mi, 7.5 miles west of the Hunt Road and Highway 4 intersection near Copperopolis. The California land conservation application actually serves as both an application to establish a Williamson Act contract in addition to an agriculture preserve. So this is a two-part process, as you know. So part one is to establish the agriculture preserve and Williamson Act contract. As we all know, the history of Williamson Act goes back to 1965, when the state of California enacted the California Land Conservation Act to preserve agriculture land in open space lands for preventing their unnecessary conversion to urban uses. The Act enables local government to enter into contracts with private landowners for the purpose of restricting specific parcels of land to agriculture-related and open space uses. In doing so, the land is assessed as agriculture being the highest and best use of land, resulting in a lower tax, tax for the land owner. Calaveras County has established rules to administer agriculture preserves and Williamson Act contracts. Under Board of Supervisors Resolution 75489, we set forth policies and rules in which we still use today. Specific policies and rules applicable to establishment of a contract are further outlined in the attached staff report to the planning commission that was in your packet. The agriculture preserve, if established, must be consistent with the general plan. The resource production element of the general plan sets policy encouraging the continuation. The resource production element of the general plan sets policy encouraging the continuation and of continued participation in the Williamson Act and agriculture, agriculture preserve, as well as other agriculture-related long-term conservation programs. These parcels are designated by the general plan as resource production. This land use designation identifies lands capable and primarily used for agricultural purposes. Located in the Salt Spring Valley, this area of our county is known to support a diversity of agriculture operations, including livestock grazing grapes and, and small orchards. And it looks as though I managed to leave part of my presentation back in the office, but that's okay. So, in addition, the parcels, one of the minimum requirements is that the parcel actually has to be a minimum of one hundred acres, so this is a, this, this land, three hundred and five acres, is actually comprised of two assessor parcels, but it's one legal parcel, and so the three hundred and five acres actually meets the minimum. There was a feasibility study that was done for this particular property conducted by our agricultural farm advisor for the county, Scott Onetto, making a finding that the parcel has a capability of earning a total of fifty-four dollars and some odd cents in agriculture production on an annual basis. The application itself has identified this property as a cattle grazing operation with the capability of producing thirteen thousand five hundred dollars annual from that, from that operation. So, it's meeting all of the minimum requirements. This application was heard by your appointed agriculture advisory committee, and they went ahead and considered the entire application upon discussion. Within a unanimous vote, they voted for you to recommend, recommending that you actually establish the contract. So, this project is actually exempt from SEQA, and we find that it's meeting all of the minimum requirements for establishment, so our recommendation to you is that you, you actually establish this contract for a total of three hundred and five point four one acres of land.
All right, are there any questions from the board? Public comment on this item? Maybe I'd like to make a public comment. All right, seeing none, I will, any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and seek a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's five zero. Thank you. Item nineteen, I believe, is yours, Gina.
Item nineteen, ordinance, planning, one, find a project exempt from SEQA, two, authorize summary publication and a brief property description, three, conduct a public hearing, and four, adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APNs zero five zero zero two three zero two seven and zero five two zero one seven zero nine zero for general agricultural to agricultural preserve for Mark Boulder as trustee of the Boulder Living Trust due to the establishment of an agricultural preserve and Williamson Act Contract Number three nine three totaling three hundred five point four one acres.
So now that you have voted to establish the agriculture preserve and Williamson Act contract, part two is to consider land use application two thousand twenty-four dash zero five eight, which is a zoning amendment to rezone APNs fifty-two seventeen ninety and fifty twenty-three twenty-seven from the current A-one general agriculture zone to AP agriculture preserve. The purpose of the AP zone is to protect and preserve lands for intense agriculture and ranch, and ranching production. Agriculture preserve zoning applies to lands for which the Williamson Act contract has been executed. The AP zone may also be utilized for open space protection and preservation under the Williamson Act. All of the permitted and conditional uses allowed in the AP zone, which are developed and operated in conformance with Title Seventeen, and county rules administering agriculture preserves and Williamson Act contracts are determined by the Board of Supervisors to be compatible with the definition of agriculture, recreational and open space uses of the land, and thus the use, the use, a use authorized in the agriculture preserve zone and, and for lands under the Williamson Act contract. This zone is compatible with a resource management, resource production, working lands, rural transition, and rural residential general plan land use categories. On October twenty-fourth, the Planning Commission took into consideration this application. With a unanimous vote of present commissioners, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the AP zoning upon establishment of the contract. This project, in addition to the establishment of the contract, are both projects under SEQA categorically exempt under Section fifteen three one seven. Likewise, the Planning Commission or the planning department's recommendation is to amend the zoning of, of APNs fifty-two seventeen ninety and fifty twenty-three twenty-seven from A-one general ag to AP ag preserve, signifying the establishment of the Williamson Act and, of the Williamson Act contract and agriculture preserve for Mark Boulder.
All right, questions or comments from the board? Public comment, is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Seeing none, I'll bring it back for the board for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppers, is there a second? Second by Supervisor Toffenelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Thanks, Gina. All right, item seventeen, or excuse me, supervisor announcements.
In compliance with Government Code five three two three two point three D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
All right, Supervisor Stopper, lights on, so you can begin.
CSAC. There's a, you know, interesting, a lot, lot of things talked about, sat down one meeting when it came to flood and implementation by the counties with response and preparation. Mr. Pack did a presentation, our former public works director, he, he, he did a presentation there and working with a lot of the same issues that we're dealing with, the Cosgrove Creek, when it cut up there in Butte County, so, you know, some interesting information there. And also, our, Robert Packenger did a presentation on some EV vehicles, I was not present for that one, but I got very, very good reviews from everyone else on, on his presentation and how the implementation was not necessarily an easy thing to overcome, let's put it that way.
Thank you, Supervisor Toffenelli.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Supervisor Follendorf?
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Abert?
Hi, just need to report that I did also attend the CSAC conference, and I thought it was a very good conference this year and enjoyed it and got a lot of new connections and, and thank you for, for being there, and, and also I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done with RCRC over the years. I know in this year's penultimate meeting, it must be difficult to be handing things over, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin, it's probably easier than you might think. I also, I also, I also attended the, the CSAC meeting, it was, it was actually, I really felt that it was good, I gotta admit that I left there kind of inspired, you know, I heard some good things and saw some good things coming down the road, and it's great. I also heard people complimenting Mr. Packenger on his presentation, it's always nice to get a shout-out in the hallway for, for your staff and your Calaveras doing a good job. I also want to thank Supervisor-elect Andel for joining, and it was, it was really, it was, it was a good time, I mean, it was just nice spending time with everybody and talking about these issues, we got a lot of good stuff ahead of us. Yeah, she's all educated on how to do this job now. The bar's low, Ben. So, that is, that, that wraps up our supervisor announcements, and there's Madam CEO, anything to add? Madam Counsel? Madam Clerk?
No.
Susan? Very well, this meeting stands adjourned, thank you.
Recor-
You can come on up, but we're done with the meeting, so...